I was at the bar, excuse me.
Welcome. Thank you. We have a kind of a long agenda. We'll see how quickly it goes. First, we have the presentation of our audit findings for EFPR group. How are you?
Good evening. John Costello, EFPR group. Should have four items in front of you. The item I'm going to present, the report to the board, management letter, and the financial statements, all still draft. Just going to cover the presentation piece. Maybe you've already provided the other documents prior to this. Going to start on page three. We conducted the audit for May 31st, 2017, in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles as well as government auditing standards, the objective of which was to obtain a reasonable, not absolute assurance. Sorry about that. The scope was described to you in your engagement letter dated June 12th. Currently, we, well, not currently, we will be issuing an unmodified or clean opinion. There is no issues. Management was very cooperative, no issues with getting anything we asked for or unambiguous answers. Currently, to complete the audit, we need the board's review and approval. Once that's done, we'll do a couple of subsequent event procedures as well as send a management rep letter, which will be signed by Michelle. Page four, the village's significant accounting practices and policies are described in note one to the financials. Your main accounting estimates are useful if of capital assets, counting for pensions, your compensated absences, as well as your OPEB or other post-employment benefits liability. There is no significant changes to the estimates or assumptions, and everything was considered appropriate. And we list some where you might find some of your significant disclosures. As to the results, there is no material corrective statements that we had to relay to management, and there are no uncorrected statements other than trivial. We do look at internal control, but as an aspect of planning our audit procedures, but we don't look at it to provide an opinion on internal control, and we do not issue an opinion on internal control. We also look at certain provisions of laws, regulations, contracts, et cetera. But again, we're not there to provide an opinion on compliance, and we do not express an opinion. This goes on to describe what might be reported. But there were no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies to report. There was no significant changes to our audit strategy, no surprises, which is always good. There is no, like I said, no violations of laws or other items that we would report to you. Again, we weren't specifically looking for them, but we did not come across any. We're not aware that management was shopping for opinions on accounting practices with other accountants. No disagreements with management. Like I said, once again, they were very helpful in providing the information when requested. There's really essentially nothing other than what we've given to you that we feel needs to be reported. And then, again, we'll be requesting a management representation letter, which says essentially that everything that was provided was correct and nothing was omitted. Upcoming significant accounting announcements. There is a slight typo in this.
Where are we at? Sorry.
Oh, sorry. Page seven. This, your OPEB liability for your other post-employment benefits currently is at like $1.2 million. When this GASB kicks in beginning, like I said, there's a typo. It's for the year ended May 31st, 2019. So that's not this year, but the next year. GASB has decided that you'll no longer amortize it over 30 years. They're going to bring it all on the books at once. Right now, you've got a liability of about 1.6, 1.24. Your unaccrued, or your UAAL is actually right now at 3.2. So when this kicks in, you'll probably, your liability will jump by almost triple. But this is on your statement of net position. It's a non-cash issue. But just so you're aware that this is going to happen in two years from now.
Will that be affected? I believe Michelle communicated to you that we've changed the way we handle our vacation, blah, 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 blah.
And retirement benefits.
Yeah, next year, we'll see a change in your compensated absences number, and we'll disclose the fact that the assumptions were changed.
Right.
This is for the post-retirement health care benefits.
Which also changes.
Then it shows.
Yeah, that'll be your actuary. She'll communicate that data to the actuary. You'll change the assumptions. But that'll, next year, well, for the year ending May 31st, 2018, it'll still be under the, or it should still be under the 30-year amortization, bringing a little bit on at a time. You'll see a little bit of a change from that, but for the year ended 2019, you're going to see it almost triple. But that's a non-cash item.
Originally, we thought it was changing for 2018, right, for next fiscal, for this fiscal year? That's what one of the emails had said. It's really two years out?
Well, for you guys, because you're May, May year end.
Okay.
Throws things, you know, it throws things off a little.
Okay.
But just so you're aware of that, you'll see it coming. It's, you know, everybody's getting stuck with it. It's not just you guys. Page eight, we just, again, state that, you know, we're independent. We have no vested interest in the outcome of this. Then pages nine through 11 is just some comparisons on some of the major items. So won't go through each and every one of these, but it'll at least give you some idea as to what you're seeing on the financials. Like I said, like on page nine, in the, about two-thirds of the way down, you can see your other post-employment benefits liability at 2.1.248. And footnote 2B7, you'll see your UAAL at this point in time is 3.2, which is what OPEB will make you put fully on the books when it kicks in. Obviously, that number's going to go up a bit as, you know, things change, but when it occurs, it'll go considerably.
These numbers are more notes for financial statements. It doesn't mean that we have to pay out $3.2 million. That'll be the reason at all. Just want to make that clear.
Yeah, yeah. Like I said, it's non-cash. You pay this every year as part of your regular healthcare payments. It's just an estimate if you were to suddenly stop doing business, but you're a government, not a business. But they want, they want these liabilities on the books, just like ERS and PFRS. They want those liabilities on the books as well.
Are there any other changes, or what does this actually mean? I mean, besides there's no cash, which is nice.
Well, it's not cash, but you're going to see your, right now, your unrestricted net position is a net deficit because you have a lot of investment in capital assets. You'll just see that get a lot, that deficit get a lot bigger. Like I said, it's, on your statement of net position, that's your full accrual. It's not your general fund or your other funds, which is realistically what you use for budgeting and general expenditures. Just like your long-term debt isn't on the statement of net position. So effectively, it doesn't have an impact. It makes the numbers look worse, but it's.
Right, that's it.
Yeah.
Unless everybody retires tomorrow. We don't have to worry about it. Everybody retires tomorrow. Everybody collects their health insurance. Same thing with the pension, and we went out of business. It's likely not going to happen, but it's the cost of continuing people's benefits if the village stopped being a village tomorrow.
Were there any questions?
In looking at the numbers, again, on page nine, it appears as if the cash equivalents went down by at least $300,000. Is there, what is the cause of that, or what contributed to that? The first line under assets, the top of the page.
That should be seen.
Just looking at 2016 versus 2017, 2016, 17 was over $300,000, less than 200, than 2016.
Well, it's kind of a factor of everything. It's nothing specific, you know. It's a change in all the balance sheet items rolled in with the change in that position. There's no specific item that relates to.
So, again, looking at assets, the bottom line of assets, capital assets being depreciated, that went up significantly. And there's a note there that's a comment that said half a million dollars. Reclassified CIP of $400,000, list depreciation of three and a quarter.
Oh, how do that's the Main Street project? The Main Street project?
Oh, my goodness. Okay.
The Main Street project, the similar upgrade projects. CIP is construction in progress.
Okay.
So it's stuff that was, it's going on as of May 31st, which there wasn't much going on. So that's why they reclassed it out of in-progress to the regular. It's now an asset.
Okay. And as a result of that, it makes 2017 look more positive asset-wise than 2016. Got it.
Correct. Yeah, there was a, almost half a million dollars worth of new expenditures towards assets that were.
In the, in that fiscal year?
Correct.
Gotcha. Okay. And the liabilities, our liabilities went down.
Yes.
Which has got to be a good thing.
Yes. A lot of this, there was a regular scheduled debt payments as well as a change. Your ERS reporting liability. You, the village receives a report from New York State saying, record this liability. This is what it is. I, I can't even audit it. Most I can do is compare it to something, another report, and say they match, and that's what goes on your books. There was, they changed the rates of, their investment rates and some other items, and it changed what was being reported. You can see the last line in liabilities.
Yeah.
Your proportionate share went down 200,000. Again, it's, it's a non-cash item. It's similar to OPEB. It's what they say you would owe if you'd stopped today to keep paying all your civil service items.
So the bottom line is that our net position improved.
Correct.
Which has got to be a good thing.
Yes. Then on page 10 is like the statement of activities. On page 11 and 12 is the general fund, which is pretty much the main focus of the village. And then, you know, and general fund side, everything is fairly consistent.
It's a timing difference noted there under assets on page 11, where.
Under state and federal aid receivable. Well, that's.
The state and federal aid receivable.
That's just saying there was no, like, new major projects that would be the result of that change. It's just a, you know, when you're putting in for, when you've done the work and asked for the, submitted for the reimbursement.
Okay.
Again, Main Street project.
Yeah, so depending on, depending on when the work's done and you submit for it, but there was no major items that would, there was no major, new, new major projects in that.
Okay.
And you can see the expenditures for the paving and drainage project on page 12. You can see how it jumped up almost 400,000.
And that's the Main Street paving and drainage, got it?
When in doubt, it's Main Street.
Oh, congratulations.
We finished with Main Street for sure. And so you will be drafting a letter to the auditing firm? That was one of the.
Oh, no, we provide the letter.
Okay.
And then she'll just sign it. Essentially states the information she gave us is correct. She gave us everything we asked for, that, you know, nothing's being hidden or. The very boilerplate type of letter.
And, and what you sent us here is the draft that will be completed.
Yes, yes. Some of you have two-sided. There's a couple of one-sided because I got yelled at by the secretary. Now, apparently, our printer doesn't like double-sided, so I get yelled at when I do it. But yes, we'll call, we'll do some final procedures tomorrow. We have to, like, do follow phone calls with any legal counsel we can set confirmations to because those have to be within a certain timeframe of the report date, send the letter, and then if everything has been, during agreement of everything, we'll get that released.
Thank you, Michelle. Thank you, John.
Just, I have a few just additional things real quick. General fund balance, we all talk about it. We want to know about it. It did go up $14,000. We have to keep in mind, although we're at, according to the report, at 571, we have allocated money in the hopes of doing repairs throughout the village, namely, the roof for the fire department. So 571 is what we had, what we have. Saved some of that for other things. If the roof goes up another $15,000, as the quotes have come in higher, might have to take that out of the fund balance again. So now you're 571 minus, you know, 90 instead of the 75. Also, in one of the draft letters at the end of last year from the audit, they wanted us to review the bank recs, have someone sign off on them other than myself. I've been working with Fran. She has the patience to sit there and go through them and make sure that I'm getting rid of reconciling items when they're due, maybe not one month, but two or three months out. So she's been signing off on them. So that, they noted we corrected, and they're okay with that. And then the new finding is the fixed assets.
It's a recommendation.
Okay. Even better, recommendation, is that we have a system for disposing of fixed assets so that we know where our items are going. Although a lot of the items are probably still sitting in the highway garage, we need to keep a record that that 1980 snow blower is sitting in the highway garage, and that when we do get rid of it, goes to a scrapyard, and it's not just somebody taking it home to tinker with because it's 30 years old. It's still village property. Can't do that.
Formal approval, one.
So I talked to Charlie. I will need somebody in this room to come with me and go through some inventory so we can finalize the fixed assets once and for all. I've been working really hard the past two years to try and get it where it should be because it hadn't been done in a few years. So we've got to go through everything one more time, probably take a two- or three-day field trip and go through everything. But we'll do it once, and then we'll have a system going forward. All the new stuff that comes in, I've been tracking much better. It's cleaning up the old stuff. Like, for example, one of the fixed assets was that Greg had a stove. Greg said he had a stove in one of the plants in like 20 years. So stuff, silly stuff like that, we need to clean up. Take volunteers, or we can draw straws.
I'll work with you.
Yeah, it shouldn't have any effect on the statement of net position because all these old items would have been fully depreciated by this point in time. You know, like, your computers are five years, so, you know, a computer from 1982, you know, that was fully depreciated by '87. That's why you got to have a proper disposal, you know? Most people take the old computer, okay, off to the side, and up it goes, but.
So we do one big cleanup, and then going forward, you know, if Charlie or Greg or anybody gets rid of something, it's just filling out a piece of paper. The board will approve it at the meeting. Someone will sign off on it, and it'll go in a folder so that we have records. You know, the leak blower caught on fire, and it had to be dumped, stuff like that.
Is there a cash, a number we're talking that we have to include in this, or are we going down to three staplers and?
Well, the board policy right now is $500 and above. If the board wanted to change that policy, they can.
That would be your capitalization threshold. So anything that costs more than $500, you would capitalize and put on here. But that, all the items should be tracked regardless of the cost.
But the biggest, it's the big-ticket items. For $500, if you were to buy five weed whackers at $100 each, and you bought them all at once, it's $500. That would go on there. If you went down and just bought one, it's $100. It would not go on this list. We could still track it, but for purposes of this list, it wouldn't. If you want to count staples, I'm all for it, but not necessary. And that's all I have to add. If you guys have any questions about the report, Marie had read through it, the fine-tooth comb. We had made some changes, worked with the auditors. I had made a suggestion for one change, too, all on board. So this is the finalized. If you are to agree to it and adopt it, they'll get it bound, and we'll sign off on everything.
Yeah.
If you do have questions, you know, a couple days, if you want to read it over the weekend or whatever, I can help, or I'll send it off to John.
Great. Thank you. John, thank you for coming down.
Yeah, thank you.
Do we need to make a motion now to accept the preliminary auditing rate for the final?
This will turn into the final unless somebody has a change.
Okay, so we can hold off until the final?
They won't print the final until you adopt.
Okay.
So I don't, you can either do a motion at this board meeting, or you can do it at next board meeting in case you want to review it again. But I'm okay with this. I read through every single word in here, and whatever I questioned, I did, and I'm comfortable with it.
I think we should make a motion.
Okay.
Yep.
I make a motion to approve the results of the EFPR audit.
I'll second further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, thanks, John.
John, thank you. Thank you. You still here?
Financial reports. Keep going, you're on a roll.
Financial report. There's really nothing really happened in October, business as usual. I didn't type up anything because I really didn't have anything positive or negative to say. With next month, will be through November, I'm going to do both quarterly. It'll be the second quarter, so quarterly analysis. It'll show six months compared actuals to budget, see where we are with percentages, and I'm going to try and do projections, maybe not for every account line, but at least the big ones, to see where we're going. We need to move money. If we're going to have savings. The goal is to do every line, but I don't know if that'll necessarily happen, but I'm going to do the big ones because I think it's a good idea so that we know where, where we stand halfway through the year. And budget time is right around the corner, even though it feels like we did it last month.
We'll come back to that in a minute, budget time. The one thing that jumps out at me is attorneys. Where, it appears as if it's on page two, three, four, page four. The amount that has been paid year-to-date looks as if it's maybe three months' worth of attorney's fees.
Okay. There's a couple things about that. If you compare it to last year, last year you're at $1,500. This year you're at $10,000. One is the timing of John First Firm's bills.
Yeah.
They come in spurts.
Yeah.
So last year, not many were paid at this time, even though we're five months in. Also, this year, we have PBA negotiations with another law firm that did not happen last year. So the two of those together is why we're up to $10,000.
I'm not worried about it up. I'm worried about it being too low.
Okay.
So what I was going to ask is, can you nudge Jones Firm and get them to send us some bills?
I do think that the beginning of the year was relatively lower.
Yeah.
But it was also lower than, like, some, in some months, I know in the past, like, we've seen a $10,000 bill. We haven't seen those.
Yeah, it's, the, the thing is that they, as you say, they do in spurts, and that's not good for us.
And I would think the next one should be substantial with all the advice needed on some of these HDRV issues.
And we also don't have Butterfield as much either.
If you could send them a reminder. I know we had to do that a few times last year. They're just very lax about something, I suppose. So Judith's bills are in here, in the $10,000?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
She knows on time.
Great.
Soon as she walks out of the door. Checking them up while you're on the phone, right?
Well, if you look at permits and fees, fee streak, their check came in November, so it hasn't been deposited according to the sheet. So that's why there's a big difference from 2,000 to 14,000, but their check was over 30.
I asked Jeff if we, if we had to bill them for the police, and he said he hadn't. He'll be getting in touch with Judy. I know you had the spreadsheet put together, so we're ready to bill them on that.
Okay. And we agreed that we're billing them for the actuals.
Yes.
Actual person that worked that day and the hours, everything. And that's all done. That's just getting a letter off to them.
Right. Right. It's either four hours or six hours, as it turns out.
Mm-hmm. Yep, so that's fine.
So are they on, on, on that, if they're here for just four hours, are, are they working the full day? Have they, have they put in for the full day?
They do work the full day and they were paid for a full eight hours. The, in the beginning, um, the first two weekends, they were six hour shifts. And for whatever reason, um, Larry could probably speak to that, they did move to eight hour shifts, an eight hour walking tour. Um, so they were paid in full, but we're only billing C-streak for the four or six hours that they were docked here.
I think they should be billed for the whole day.
You said, you said we could do it the other way.
What's that?
You said we could do it the other way.
Oh, we could do it the other way.
You want me to send you the email?
Yeah, thank you.
Um, and if C-streak has graciously agreed to pay without questioning, I don't know if I would go to the eight. Um, the last thing, so we have, the board has an investment policy that gets adopted every year at Reorg or every two years, whatever it is. I think if, we should review it. Um, the investment policy mostly pertains to the LoSAP, which is a Fireman Service Award. It's performing a little above average right now compared to other municipalities. Um, last year was underperforming. It's a good time to have RBC come in, they haven't come in in a while. I haven't met, um, David Rogers either, um, so I think we should have him come in. Um, LoSAP also agrees, they think it, they're the ones that are pushing for it, they think that our portfolio should be reviewed.
Yeah, I spoke with, um, a member of the Garrison Fire Commission. And they have been able to demonstrate that they do not need the amount of funds that LoSAP has stated are required. Should we get them involved in this? They're, they have offered to talk with us about it.
Who, Garrison?
I'm not sure I follow what you're saying.
Um, the LoSAP estimates are based upon their projections of investments.
And they're also based on the village's financial investment policy, which is part of the reason why they wanna review it.
Right, okay, so what Garrison has found, if I remember correctly, is that they were able to do better on the LoSAP amounts by having their own investment strategy. And they, they told me that they were able to decrease their LoSAP, um, monies significantly. And they offered to come and talk to us about that.
Now, is there a difference because they're a district and do they have, uh, do we have restrictions because they're a municipality versus a district?
No, LoSAP is, LoSAP, and the, um, the rules would apply to anybody. I do think though, I'd be hesitant to get them involved until we hear, um, what Penflex and RBC say. Together, we wanna have a joint meeting, um, Tony is our guy at Penflex, um, us, the board, RBC.
Okay.
Um, Fire Department, if they wanna be involved. Um, we revamped, not revamped, we went over the rules again with the Fire Department on points and who's allowed, um. So those changes have significantly impacted how much money we need to contribute as well. Um, so we're all ready to come down? I don't, I'm a little weary, um, of Garrison.
We'll, we'll go with the, the first that you suggested, after that, we may want to talk to Garrison.
Um, the biggest thing with Garrison, I'd like to know is if they're a hundred percent funded. Um, we, we are, our LoSAP is a hundred percent funded, everybody retired tomorrow, everybody's covered. Um, New York State pension is like ninety-six percent covered or ninety-two percent, something like that. Don't quote me on that, Doug, I don't know. But New York State is almost fully funded, um, and that's part of the why, it's on our books, what he was talking about, the noncash. But you don't have to be that funded, so Garrison might have, and I'm speculating, might have not wanted to chose to be fully funded. Um, and I think it's something that, being small, that we should be closer to fully funded, because if something did happen, we're gonna, it's harder for us to find money, um, if everybody did retire tomorrow.
Can you talk about our investment strategy, is it something that you can send us? Is it, uh, is it a hundred pages longer?
Uh, we should have an investment policy in the, um, one of the binders, so I can pull it out and scan it.
I'd, I'd like to see it to get a feel for.
It's how, it, basically how risky we wanna, we have some of the assumptions, um, from, some of them apply only to LoSAP, and that's where we need Tony, who's the actuary, to come in and find out what we want some of our assumptions to be. And this is where we could, what Garrison might have done too, they might have worked with then the actuaries to change their assumption. So we'll try, and then if we don't like it, then I'm happy to talk to Garrison, but I'd rather talk in-house first.
Absolutely. Are they, are they sort of insinuating that we're too careful or too risky, or just that we haven't looked at it for a long time?
I think some aspects are, um, not risky enough and, um, but it's, it's time to be looked at.
Okay, so do you wanna set up a meeting, do you wanna coordinate? And the, and we can work it into a workshop, we start at six thirty or whatever works, and do that.
Have you ever met David Rogers?
No, not that I know. Good, thank you very much.
Um, Fran, are you good with the PSL, right, for the rest of the meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, uh, got one more quick one and then we'll get to you guys, so if you have any questions, whatever. Uh, next is Resolution thirty-two thousand seventeen, amending employee benefit package. Uh, when we redid the package recently, um, new hires, uh, the way we had, uh, given them, uh, when they could take their, take days off or when they would get vacation days, uh, didn't seem, uh, right to us. Um, person was working six months and, uh, wasn't able to use any, so Fran, if you wanna.
Can you give me the whole resolution or just go to?
Yeah, the resolution is quick if you want.
Uh, Resolution amending employee benefit package, a special meeting of the Village Board of the Village of Cold Spring. On the twenty-eighth day of November, the meeting was called to order by Mayor Morandi. Okay, let's not do the voting until we go back then. So, well, basically what it, what we're doing here, and we had discussed this at a previous meeting, changing the, how the, uh, new hires, anybody hired on or after September thirtieth, will be able to take their PTO. So what has been changed is people hired, uh, new hires from zero to one year of service, will get twenty days of PTO. And we added an asterisk to that in the employee handbook that says for the first year of employment. PTO days will be credited and prorated on a quarterly basis. No PTO days may be taken until after the first quarter of employment. And after the first quarter, only PTO days earned and credited may be taken, so that's the adjustment. Previously, it had said that they could not take PTO days until after their probation, which in some cases was as much as a year. Um, so we have now allowed them to take it, um, on a quarterly basis, uh, right after the, the first quarter. So now the, um, the resolution reads that, uh, at a special meeting of the board, uh, the Village of Cold Spring, uh, New York, on the twenty-eighth day of November, the meeting was called to order by Mayor Morandi upon roll. Being called the following was recorded, um, and then I'll call the roll.
Roll call time.
Mayor Dave Morandi.
I vote aye.
Trustee Lynn Miller.
Aye.
Trustee Marie Early.
Here.
Yes, aye.
So, sorry, the, the, the resolution hasn't been offered yet. He's doing a roll call.
Okay.
Right, you're, you're doing a roll call, not a vote.
I think, I think we're doing a, a vote on it, but it's a little confusing.
We didn't, we didn't do it properly.
So the resolution, alright, so I make a motion.
We need, we need a motion, yeah.
We'll make a motion to, uh, accept this resolution for adoption, so I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Roll call vote now.
Mayor Dave Morandi.
I vote aye.
Trustee Lynn Miller.
Aye.
Trustee Marie Early.
Yes.
Trustee Francis Murphy.
Yes.
Trustee Steve Valoto.
Yes.
Thank you, thank you, Brian.
I'm sorry, um, I'm, I'm voting on the resolution. Uh, the, the lead into the resolution, it says at a special meeting. This is our long one.
Yeah, at a, a meeting of the boards, we'll take out the words special.
Okay.
The vote should sort of be at the end.
Yeah, we have to, to, uh, to redo this.
Okay.
Well, not redo it, I'm, in the future, have the roll call at the end, and the way this reads is not good.
So we'll leave it as it is?
Yeah. But we'll, we'll change the special meeting.
Yeah, it says in two places.
Okay, next was the, uh, alright, one other thing, uh, discussion of will paid family leave, uh, coverage, opt in or out? Sure.
The governor of the state of New York has, I guess, required that, um, private employees offer paid family leave to their employers. No, private employers offer paid family leave to their employees effective January first. Um, public employers are not required to do this, so we have to personally opt in or opt out. We have to actually opt in or, or opt out of this benefit, um, to our employees by December first. Now, a couple of things, first of all, we had originally known until about two weeks ago that we had until January first to make this decision. Uh, and then second week of November, they decided that we have until December first to make this decision. Uh, when we looked at it, we thought it was a, a nice, um, benefit, uh, it's paid for by the employees, it, it's a minimal price. It looked really good to us, but we have been got, we have received notification from John First, from, um, uh, from our insurance company and from, uh.
Judy Maylie.
From Judy Maylie, basically all saying that most public employees are not opting into this, that it's too complicated at this point for us to opt into it. The other issue that we have here is that we, if we're gonna opt into it, we would have to do it for our regular employees and the police who are under a union, what, we would have to negotiate that through the union contract, but we don't have time to do that at this point. So at this point, uh, it's been recommended to us that we opt out of it. Uh, we have a chance to opt into it anytime in the future, but at this point, because it's more complicated and, um, Karen and the insurance company and John First, uh, nobody is able to, you know, say other than how complicated it is and, uh, and how it could be detrimental to us. Um, basically what it is, is if someone in your family other than yourself, um, gets ill and you have to take care of that person, then you, uh, you can get covered, you get paid for up to, I believe it is, eight weeks. And it's not, um, FMLA, it's not family, um, medical leave, that's for you, this is not for you. Uh, it's complicated and what the, what the lawyers have told us is it's gonna mean that you're gonna have to have somebody, um, making decisions on what kind of, you know, what kind of leave you're taking, who's sick, if it's, if it's eligible, if it isn't, and so on and so forth. So at this point, they have pretty much advised us to opt out of it. Uh, we can opt into it at a later date, since we're in the middle of negotiations with the union at this point. And maybe something that we bring up with the union, um, as you're talking, Phil, and then opt into it. The employee, typically the employees pay for it, and it's really cents, I think the highest any of our employee would pay would be like three dollars a pay period, uh, a deduction. Um, but the, because it's being sort of one of these, you know, everybody hurry up, you're gonna do it. Uh, and we're not, we haven't got our heads around it, neither do our lawyers. Our insurance agents, they've advised us to opt out, so I'm, I'm gonna make a recommendation that at this point, we opt out of it. And that we can look into it again, uh, later on in the year, and, and when we can get some more information from our lawyers, uh, so.
So can we make a motion to opt out and also authorize, I guess, Michelle to, uh, send the letter?
Yeah, there has to be, I believe, three letters, there has to be a letter to, um, a letter to the Workman's Compensation Board, a letter to the disability insurance carrier, and a letter to the employees, so, um, and Michelle's aware of this and she has the forms that are popping up on the website, um, just saying that we're opting out of it at this point. So the motion is that we opt out of it and authorize Michelle to, um, get those notices out before December first, which means tomorrow.
I will second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry.
If the village decides to opt in, does that require all employees to participate? Or can employee, although the village opts in, can employee A opt out?
I believe that.
I think everyone has to.
I think everyone has to be in. Because we're currently covered by disability insurance or insurance carrier, although I believe everyone has to opt into it. It's pays out of a pay period, um, the thing is too, that the union, the police union.
I'm, I'm, I'm still in the employee, so.
So if we opt in, everybody has to.
So if the village decides to opt in, then all employees must pay?
All employees must, well, all.
All employees must pay.
Must agree to.
Typically employee funded. It's typically employee funded.
They would have to agree that they were gonna opt into it.
No, 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 sorry, sorry.
We opt into it, they have to have an deduction, a payout.
Yes, but if, if some, if, if an employee, this is what I, my understanding, is that all the employees would have to agree to that they would, that they wanted to be in on it. If an employee did not wanna be in on it, then, then we could not in, that was my understanding. And I don't know why we're talking about this, because we've got advice from three attorneys, and so why are we, why are we gonna?
Because it's a discussion.
Yeah, I mean, when we.
Okay, well, it's a discussion that.
And we were thinking we were gonna opt into it until the attorneys, attorneys came out at us. And then the other thing is too, that we need to negotiate with the union.
If you, if you'd like to wait, we can, uh, well, we can't wait.
No, no, we can't wait, it has to be done, because Michelle has to do this tomorrow, before December first, otherwise we're gonna be in. So are we good?
I don't know, are we good? Any further discussion, or are we, are we, I, I don't under, I don't understand all the, I don't think our attorneys understand the whole thing.
Yeah.
From my quick review of it, I think with Michelle, it was that they would have to, that every, all, everyone would have to opt in. Not, not us, we wouldn't determine it, I think all the employees would, but I might be wrong on that.
I believe, the way I understood it.
Doesn't matter, we're gonna opt out, okay, take a vote.
Now, what, so what, what did you think?
I, I believe that the village could opt in, and then we just have to notify the employees that after ninety days, this will be coming out of their paycheck. So for the first ninety days, the village has to pay.
Right, aye.
And we would just notify them that it's a benefit they get.
I would think that they would have some say in whether we're taking money out of their paycheck.
Okay, so, we have a motion, are we good?
Uh, yeah, make the motion again, please.
Okay, I, I make a motion, uh, that the village will opt out of the New York State paid family leave covers for all employees.
I will second the motion again. Do we have any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next was the, uh, this presentation by Phillips Town Community Congress.
Shall we sit at the table?
Uh, wherever, whatever you feel comfortable with, I think, come up front a bit, and we have a camera, if we could pan over.
It's not an audit statement, so, you know, why have it these up here? Let me just pass these out, um, before we get going, these copies of the results for the report, how's everybody doing? Good evening. Good evening. How are you? Alright, thank you. So, uh, Jason Angel, Ecological Citizens Project and Phillips Town Community Congress organizer.
Jane Marcy, Phillips Town Community Congress, steering committee.
Alright, so, uh, thanks for making time for this tonight. We just wanted to come and update you all on the results of the Phillips Town Community Congress vote, uh, that concluded on Halloween night. Uh, and, um, the Phillips Town Community Congress, I know a few of you were able to make some of the public forums that led up to the vote, but the, uh, the two kind of main goals of the Phillips Town Community Congress were just to create a nonpartisan opportunity for any resident of Phillips Town to offer an idea, uh, to strengthen the community. Uh, and then to go through a voting process where any resident of Phillips Town thirteen years and older could vote on their top three community priorities to get a sense of, you know, what the common ground wa- was and, and what people care the most about across Phillips Town. Uh, and so those were kind of the, the, the two main goals, just create an opportunity to, to share ideas and then get a sense of common priorities. And what we, what we wanted to come out of that exercise of, uh, identifying, you know, what people cared about the most, was, was hoping that we would, uh, be able to create some civic engagement, volunteership and energy. Because I, I know you all are probably aware more than anybody else that, uh, you know, every local government has a lot to do, uh, and without real community support and participation, uh, it'll be difficult to get, you know, many of those things done. So we were really hoping it would lead to that sort of civic engagement and, you know, the, the, uh, the, it, that still has to be proven, you know, going forward, we'll have to talk about what next steps are. But so we're just gonna tonight, uh, go through the results of the vote, because I think, you know. you know, they were really interesting to see come in. And how the process worked is we just held three public forums open to any Phillips Town resident over the summer and into the fall, and any Phillips Town resident who wanted to offer a idea in response to the question, you know, how would you preserve and promote a stronger Phillips Town, could have a three-minute slot to do so. And so, over the course of those three forums, there were forty ideas offered, and then we put those forty ideas on a ballot, and we mailed that ballot to every home in Phillips Town, so I think about forty-four hundred homes received ballots, and it was just a ballot of the forty ideas presented, and asking people to name their top three priorities. And so, what I want to do, this is, the report you have is just a report on the results of that vote, which we want to share with, with this board, Nelsonville, and the town of Phillips Town, which we'll be doing at their next December meeting. But if you turn to page six, I'll just kind of briefly walk us through the results, and Jane will mention kind of what the next step is, and then see if there's any questions, or any, if you have any questions. So, out of that, out of that vote, a total of seven-hundred-and-ninety ballots were cast through the Phillips Town Community Congress process. About thirty-five ballots were deemed invalid for various reasons, whether they did not have a valid address, or they did not select a priority. So, seven-hundred-and-ninety total ballots were cast, and we were, you know, for a first-time effort, we were very pleased about that participation, because that's roughly twenty-five percent of voter turnout in the two thousand fifteen election in Phillips Town. And so, you know, as a first-time effort of trying to, you know, start this initiative, we were pleased with that response. The other thing, this just goes through the fact that most of the ballot responses came through online voting, over sixty percent, thirty percent through the postal mail ballot, and then there were two drop-off locations at Desmond Fish and Butterfield. And then if you flip to the next page, on page seven, there's just a breakdown from the data of who voted, and forty, roughly forty-three percent of the respondents indicated they lived in Cold Spring, so that was about three-hundred-and-forty respondents who were casting votes. Thirty-three percent from Continental, thirty-three percent from Garrison, eleven percent from North Highlands, seven percent from Nelsonville, and about five percent from Continental Village. So, as we expected, you know, I, I think Continental Village is, is, you know, this is not supposed to be representative of the town of Phillips Town, but regardless, you know, Continental Village is underrepresented there. If we go to the next page, let's see, page eight, that is a breakdown of the top ten proposals from the Phillips Town Community Congress vote. And I think you've got, I think this is just the first ten, the top ten proposals. There's a full listing of all forty proposals at the end of the document, but I'll just quickly go through them. The number one proposal was biking and walking paths, and so how we tabulate these results is when people chose, you know, this is my top priority, second priority, third priority, top priority got three points, second priority got two points, am I doing this right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and the third priority got one point. And so, really, it was trying to measure, you know, if someone had, if many people had biking and walking paths, but there are different levels of priorities, that kind of ultimately led, led that to be a winner. So, that's how we, how we kind of tabulated them. So, biking, walking paths was number one. Clean water was number two. Teen center was number three. School consolidation, hello, was number four. Five was climate smart community. Six was sales tax distribution, which was, I guess I could give a brief description, or you can do that in a follow-up. That was kind of the idea of approaching Putnam County to share their sales tax dollars back to Phillips Town, because Putnam County is, I think, one of only eleven out of sixty counties that don't share sales tax back to the municipalities. Seven was rec center improvements. Eight was essential care at Butterfield. Nine was drug czar, and ten was comprehensive plan. So, those were the top ten kind of winners based on people's votes. What you'll notice, before I kind of jump to the next page, is on the far right of the column is potential volunteers, the column for potential volunteers, and that was, you know, about four-hundred-and-sixty people checked a box, you know, checking a box is one thing, having to do something is another, but four-hundred-and-fifty people checked a box on the ballot that says, yes, I want to provide my contact information to learn more about how to volunteer to work on these priorities. So, we kind of took the step of, they had to check the box to do that, and four-hundred-and-sixty people did that, and then we kind of crossed the people who provide contact information with the priorities they voted for. And so, we're in the process of handing over those, those lists of volunteers to the proposers who are gonna move those initiatives forward, so they, they can see if that's actually, if they have a, a real group to draw from there. And then nine is, I really went over it, that's the potential volunteer power. Sixty-two percent of people checked that box and said they wanted to volunteer and learn more. About sixty, you know, that, that to us was a very hopeful sign, and that was a very energizing sign. And I guess the only thing I'd say before handing it over to Jane with next steps is...
We started this process, the Phillips Town Community Congress, we made it clear to people, you know, the four of us that were really the PCC organizers, we're not saying we were gonna accomplish all of these initiatives. You know, we were really just trying to create a infrastructure that allowed people to offer ideas and vote on them across the community, because we think it's a worthwhile exercise. But what we've been doing in the meantime is talking to the people that proposed the idea, like Michelle Smith, who, clean water was the number two initiative, and saying, do you want to lead this initiative going forward? And are you willing to kind of be connected to these group of volunteers to say that you're going to lead this initiative? And out of those first ten, top ten initiatives, I believe seven of the proposers have said they're willing to be identified publicly as the point person, and, and, and try to figure out next steps on the initiative, and then roughly twenty overall of the forty proposals identified themselves as wanting to lead a group to see what next steps are. And a number of these initiatives are already moving forward. Either we're already beginning to move forward, or since, since the process have begun to move forward, things like the drug czar at Phillips Town, comprehensive plan, things like that. So, you know, we recognize, it's interesting, if you look at this list of ideas, some of them are, you know, local government-based. I wondered if all of you were like, oh, jeez, making our job harder here, just so easy to get up and offer ideas, but some of them are local government-based. A lot of them are just private, community, citizen-based, in terms of who would really have to take action to make it a reality, and then a lot of them are a mix, are a mix of both, you know, private, citizen, community-action-based, working in partnership with local government. And so, I'll turn over to Jane to talk about...
I'm sorry, question?
Yeah, of course.
The number of potential volunteers is greater than, if I add the column, is greater than the number of respondents. So, how did you...
Was it of the, of the seven-hundred-and-fifty-five total respondents, four-hundred-and-sixty-nine, is that where you are, on page nine?
No, I'm on page eight. I added up the column, I might have missed column.
I think that they, when they made the check, that they would volunteer, they were making a check for, you know, one, two, and three.
Okay.
So, they, they, we didn't distinguish, they made a check just for that one thing, or that one thing, or that one thing. The check meant they were potential for, that all three of their houses.
That's right. Yeah.
Anyway, so, so, so these proposals, you know, there will be a journey for these folks, you know, that are putting forward these ideas, as Jason said, and, you know, their journey can, it might involve, you know, some governmental action, and/or it might not. But, you know, even if, if groups are already involved in working on these things, we have a community forum coming up, you know, as you may know, this coming weekend on Sunday at, gonna be at Haldain Cafeteria. It'll be like a Job Fair-style forum, where the proposers that are willing to stand up for their, for their proposals will be there, and they will be meeting with potential volunteers. And I think, you know, we're just really excited to just be able to generate this kind of civic engagement, you know, really, and, and so, it'll be interesting. It's just an interesting experiment, and we're really hoping that we can get people engaged, and, and we all know that's how things happen, you know, so, just trying to get them together, let them form their own steering committees, and do what they can to move their proposal forward, and we will have, I think we've talked about maybe six months down the road, have a check-in forum, you know, where we will see where they are at. We're not gonna just totally, you know, drop, you know, the ball, but, but it is for them to kind of make their journey at this point, and they will be learning their stumbling blocks, and they'll be learning how to, to make something happen, if they can, they can move something forward, so... So, yeah, we're really hoping that people will turn out for this, and, and we have emailed, Jocelyn, it's a fantastic job emailing everybody who volunteered, giving them all, you know, their contact information for the proposers and, and next steps, to the best of our knowledge, for the folks that have made the proposals, that are, are willing to spearhead something. So, people already, that information is already out there, you know, via email to everybody who volunteered for everything they volunteered for, about, you know, here's a contact, so there's already a lot of contact networking going on, but I think just, and I think that's what, part of what's been so successful about the community congress is that folks are really excited about having, you know, the ability to gather just our community, you know, again, nonpartisan, whatever, just people getting together and meeting people across the aisle, and just with a different diversity, and, you know, working together on things that are about our town.
That's a, that's a good point. It was important to us from the beginning to offer beer, wine, and food for people to, you know, because people breaking bread and having a beer together regardless is always a good thing.
Right.
And so, we were doing that until the end, when we ran out of budget.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm gonna work out some homemade cookies this summer, that's all we got left.
These groups are together, and you have a potential leader in, in certain groups. What kind of guidance are you giving them that says to them, you know, you, for example, wanna do bike paths?
Well, that's gonna be their journey. I mean, we can't do it for them. Well, I, I think that, you know, I think that each of these proposals, and the volunteers that will help them, will be able to make connections, and, and, you know, right down here, it says, and, you know, and community groups invited. So, if somebody's already working on a particular proposal, we're assuming that community group will also attach themselves, or somebody's already working on a certain proposal, that they will come and, you know, gather up these folks that are interested in continuing to work on what they're already working on. So, we're hoping that, you know, these different kinds of networking things will happen.
I think that's one, you know, one point I was gonna add, Jane, is that a lot of, it's important to note that a lot of these initiatives were already moving. So, we don't pretend to say, oh, the Phillips Town Community Congress created all of these initiatives. I'm sure if you look at this list, there's a lot of things that Cold Spring Board is working on from this list. And so, you know, we, we didn't really have the role, we, we called people and said, you know, for the people we knew weren't already moving on things, like, I'm sure Michelle could make a point about clean water, because that's a campaign that the Hudson Highlands Land Trust is really moving with, and so they don't need any expertise from us on how to do that. We can, you know, support it by, you know, through this process, trying to see, make sure more people know about it, can connect to it. But a lot of these things, climate smart community, there's already been, you know, the Phillips Town Garden Club is working on for about a year and a half. The teen center was an idea that came out of this process, but since then, Joe Plummer and Sandy McGelvey have been running with it. I mean, they're going up to Haldain, and they have a committee of high school teenagers to talk about what they would want out of a recreation center. The biking, walking path, Mary Ann Sullivan, who is not involved today, she was like, oh, boy, number one. So, he said, Mary Ann, do you wanna, and she's already kind of diving into it and reaching out to people. We also were like, oh, that's a, that's like a ten-year project there.
Yeah, really.
But a lot of those ones, and sales tax distribution, the Janice Hogan, who presented that, already had a meeting with Barbara Scutimara to talk about whether the county has ever brought up those sorts of ideas. So, a lot of them, you know, people just began to move forward with them. And so, all we really did is call them and say, do you wanna be recognized as a public leader, and do you wanna be handed this contact list of volunteers, really? And then hopefully, as Jane mentioned, we'll just host gatherings every once in a while, so people can update each other on progress and, and hopefully remain energized.
Each town.
On the S score, the way you ranked the scores, like, so four-hundred-and-fifteen, that's not four-hundred-and-fifteen, those stats divided by three, or is it four-hundred? You said there were three points.
So, if, yeah, so if someone named, if someone called biking, walking path their number one priority, that was assigned three points. If on someone else's ballot was the number two priority, it was assigned two points, and if someone else's ballot was the number three priority, assigned one point. So, we kind of weighted them based on where people, but yeah, that, that doesn't mean four-hundred-and-fifty people voted for them, it just means that it got the most points regardless of where it was positioned across everybody's ballot.
Good.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
Some people do, and some places do elections that way, right, where you can, you actually choose one, two, and three, and then... That's an interesting...
I like that way of voting, yeah.
And when's the meeting again?
Oh, this, this one, this coming Sunday, the third, two to four, at the Haldain Cafeteria.
And I wanna give a shout-out, as long as you're here, thankfully, the town of Phillips Town co-sponsored the meeting with us, because we were trying to secure insurance for Haldain, which is why they feed and crazy. So, they, they extend their insurance, and, and we're very happy, made it possible.
Yeah, for sure.
Haldain's insurance wouldn't cover it?
No, they don't cover it at all, and it's like, it was gonna cost five-hundred dollars to get a one-day insurance to be in Haldain.
I would call on that.
But it's free. You just have to pay all the insurance.
Well, I'd like to say thanks for doing this, guys, and I like your optimism. I'm taking two. It's a great thing.
Me a little bit. We're down again.
Thanks.
Good luck with it.
Thank you.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
Hope to see you on Sunday.
Yeah.
Might I make a suggestion?
Sure, of course.
There are quite a few people who, who work weekends. It would be really nice if you could schedule some of these forums, so that it's not on a weekend afternoon.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I couldn't go to any of them.
Oh, we have a good one.
For that very reason.
Yeah.
And I'm very interested in this, but...
Good point, yeah.
It'd be nice to have some evening time.
We could do one day.
We did, the first, you know, it's, it's funny you say, the first week was Thursday night, and that got by far the best attendance.
It did.
And then we kept trying to, like with this last one, we tried to find a Thursday night, and we just couldn't get Haldain, because they're doing all the basketball.
We were trying to make the times more diverse next goings.
Holiday.
Two years.
But good, good one.
I was really interested in this process, and I wanted to be part of it.
You're right.
Just couldn't.
How many, how many people usually show up?
Well, the public forums, where people are just offering ideas, the first one was a hundred-and-fifty, and then fifty and sixty. We did the second one at Garrison Fishing Game Club, because we're trying to be very specific about, this is a nonpartisan thing, Phillips Town has these different communities, let's go to the Phillips Town Garden Club. About fifty people showed up, I think we did the last one in North Highlands. Fired, fired, so we kind of scattered them around Phillips Town. Yeah.
I was just gonna say, if it's a smaller group, we invite you here, but it sounds like we don't have enough space.
Well, thank you for the offer, though.
We'll see, we'll see how December third goes. Maybe it'll dwindle down, or maybe it'll be a lot, we'll see.
So, as it turns out, Michelle, I bumped into Michelle, and she mentioned the activity that Hudson Highlands Land Trust has going on with clean water, and I asked if she could partner with Jason and Marcy tonight to just briefly go through what HHTC is doing.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, so first of all, thank you for signing a letter of support. What I wanted to say with a lot of these initiatives, as you, as you all look through the list of initiatives, you probably think, oh, boy, that requires money, and where's the money gonna come from? So, one of the things that we've been working on with the clean water initiative is actually applying for grant funding, and that's something that I hope happens, because, you know, you look at a lot of these initiatives, and I don't know where the money's gonna come from, if it doesn't come from grant funding or anonymous donors, things like that. So, that's what we're trying to work on. And I know that the village had already been in discussions with the DEC ESTRO program, the, the source water initiative specialists. I know that Steve, you've been involved in some of those discussions, and, and the water superintendent, Greg Phillips. And so, what we're applying for grant funding for is to go, sort of, it's coming out of those discussions to look at the whole of the Cold Spring watershed, the Foundry Brook watershed, start looking at what are the parcels that are most important? Start looking at, um, what are the parcels that are most important for conservation for, for water purposes? There is now state funding, the Clean, the Clean Water Infrastructure Act passed at the state level this year. So there's, there's funding to actually do conservation in watersheds. And then we're also looking at, uh, so looking at doing a water study that would combine looking at all of Cold Spring's watershed as well as Phillips Town, which is, you know, Phillips Town, most people are on, uh, on groundwater with wells. So, so we're looking at combining the water studies for Phillips Town and Cold Spring, doing a comprehensive analysis of water resources in the whole area. And like I said, that requires money, so that's why we're applying for funding. And then what we'd love to be able to do is set up some sort of a watershed coalition, water protection group that many watersheds have, that looks at land use in the watershed. And so not only like what are the most important parcels for conservation, but also, um, what's, what is the land use in the water? What's going on in the roads? Is there too much road salt? Is, you know, can we, can we do things differently to protect the water supply? So like I said, all that requires money and we're trying to get money towards that. So we, we, uh, we should know by early next year if we're successful in that.
Great.
Thank you very much. Okay, uh, next is the CCA agreement, uh, which we've been kind of bouncing around and losing the ball and finding it again. I contacted, I contacted John, uh, earlier in the week and then again today and our attorney who just, uh, you know, I always like having him look, you know, he reviews everything, so I wanted him to review. So unfortunately, we got this back at, I'm not even sure what time, like, five forty-two today.
Plenty of time, plenty of time.
To go over some of these, uh, other questions that he got. I'm not sure if you wanna go over some of these or if you wanna, I can meet with you and Steve and we can go over everything, kind of answer these and then follow up on it next Tuesday, we can do it at our meeting. Or, you know, there's quite a few things here, I don't know. You just, you got it about the same time I did.
Yeah.
You probably had more time to review it.
I did have time. Well, first, I, I can go through, I don't know if you guys are looking at it or not. If not, it's gonna be hard because he just sort of makes reference to sections, so without the full document.
We have the document.
Do you have a copy of it?
Um, I had it on my phone before, but if you have a hard copy, it might be.
Yeah.
Thank you. I think there's only two recommendations that actually have to do with changing the language. One is really not a recommendation, it just questions why, and I mean, number one, why certain terms are, he's, uh, why certain terms are omitted from this.
Right.
He's comparing it to an Iserda template agreement. I'm not certain the document that he's talking about, these are terms that we use in other agreements. We, we use it in the supply contract and we use it in our implementation plan. They're not applicable here for hiring of an administrator. So I'd have to see the document that he's comparing it to, but those, the reason that they're left out is just because they're not applicable for this particular document. The other language recommendation, I think, is, um, oh, in, I mean, two A. Um, I'm totally fine with that language that he suggests. And his question about in two point three, about the village, shouldn't the village determine which bid after recommendation from Juul? And the answer is yes, in, in practice, that's how it works. Um, the reason that the, uh, this is, the reason that the language is the way it is is that Juul acts, Juul serves as a, I mean, a program administrator on behalf of several municipalities. Um, and the CCA administrator is the, the entity that the state has defined as, as the, the one that will interface with the suppliers in terms of running the bid. In practice, that's precisely what we'll do, we'll collect the bids and then we'll convene the, the, all of the participating municipalities and give our recommendation on which bid we think is best. It'll still be up to the municipalities at that point. And the RFP will also reserve the right to award different pieces of the bid to different suppliers. So there's the opportunity for the, the village to, um, you know, to, to consider a different decision as other municipalities, although it does comp, add complexity. But the language that he recommends here, I don't have any problem with.
Well, he would be like, if we'd acted as our own administrator, it would make more sense. His point of view would make more sense, right?
Well, the lowest responsible bidder is not, right, that's a municipal requirement that isn't, doesn't apply here. But I think the way he's crafted the language, it says lowest responsible bidder or on the basis of best value determination under GML. Again, GML wouldn't necessarily apply here, but local law, local law would. Um, and the evaluation of factors set forth in this solicitation, which I, again, I have no problem with that, that clarification. Uh, there's one other question about language and that's in three B. What constitutes a record? Each customer's info or each page of info, it's the first, it's each customer. So that language could be clarified or we could use the word account, that might be more, or even customer. That might be more straightforward, but that's the answer to the question.
Which one was that, sorry?
That, uh, sorry, that's a three B, he's asking what constitute, we use the word record and he says, what is a record?
Oh, okay.
In terms of the other stuff, yeah, yeah, go ahead.
So rights and responsibilities of municipality, you quoted section two point three.
Right.
And you quote section two point four. You have a comment on two point four?
The comment on two point four is, I don't see any, the, the two point four says, if the municipality, essentially it says, if the municipality chooses to use us, Juul, to provide other services related to municipal energy programs, we can do that, but it's totally at the, at the request or the, the, uh, at the discretion of the municipality. So whether or not another agreement or another project constitutes a municipal energy program, I think he's just telling you to make sure that there's no ambiguity about the fact that Juul isn't collecting anything from another deal you may have, which is not an issue.
It should be stated there, then, should it not?
Not, not in the agreement. The agreement says if the munis, if in the future the municipality chooses to retain us to do some other consulting for you, we'll, we'll deal with that later. That's essentially what two point four says. It doesn't ma, it doesn't, it doesn't include anything, certainly not any existing contracts or agreements you may have with other firms or, or whomever. You know, the, the language is very, leaves it very much at the discretion of the municipality for what, what they would use Juul for. It really is just a flexibility from the municipality to hire us to do more than just CCA administration. It doesn't constrict the municipality in any way or restrict the municipality in any way.
And two five B?
And two five B, I'm not sure what section, B, okay. Two point five B, use reasonable efforts to secure release of other data applicable to, yeah, so there's data that, that we need that we're gonna be requesting from the utility in two rounds. This is an authorization, a clause authorizing, municipality authorizing us to request and collect that data on your behalf, which is part of the response, the core responsibilities of the CCA administrator. So it's just consistent with, with the PSC CCA order, which is the la, under the authority granted by the PSC CCA order. So it's just, uh, there's data, there's required data as part of the, the program management and to, necessary for the solicitation itself, the bid. So it just authorizes us to get that data for you. I'm looking for what else I haven't spoken to. In three A, what the going rate is for, for an administrative fee. That's something certainly you can look into, um, the, for the Sustainable Westchester Pilot, the, the rate was actually twenty percent higher than what, that was a tenth of a penny. And what we're proposing is twenty percent lower than that, eight one-hundredths of a penny. A tenth of a penny is industry standard, you're of course free to, to look into that if you like.
Well, we already have, you compared other administrators and you guys were the ones.
Yeah, so, uh, so that's.
Well, I mean, it certainly doesn't take too much time to check with NYSARDA. I think this is the discussion we had before. Westchester is kind of, we're central Hudson and we're talking about very different rates between the two geographic areas. So saying that it's twenty percent lower than Westchester may not hold, or it may not mean a great deal if we're looking at central Hudson rates versus kind of Hudson rates.
The, uh, the administrative fee is based on, it's pegged to the, um, the consumption from customers in the program. It's not pegged to the utility rate. It doesn't vary based on the utility rate, it's a flat fee per kilowatt hour, regardless of what the utility rate is.
Okay.
It's just a, it's essentially the way that consulting fees are collected, it's collected as a per kilowatt hour fee.
Okay.
That's the way the state has authorized it.
Okay.
So that rate is essentially, you're likely to, um, you know, consultants, of course, are free to quote whatever price to whatever municipality they choose, but the, the industry standard is one, is a tenth of a penny typically per kilowatt hour.
And do you have any idea what NYSARDA recommends?
I don't think NYSARDA has made a recommendation about that. I, I could be wrong, but I don't think.
Okay.
Have I missed any?
In five two, John's asking what constitutes a record? And also that we should see if utilities are actually charging fees for us to get the records.
Yeah, so the record, um, a record, each record is a, is a count, an account or a meter or a customer. It's really all the same, uh, they're all synonyms in this case. So in, there's only, unfortunately, there's still only one precedent for this, the Westchester Pilot. There's only been one time that, um, this process has been, um, you know, undergone but in, in New York State. And the, the rate was seven cents per record or customer for the aggregated data. And then sixty-five cents per record paid for by the winning supplier for the customer-specific data on the backend after contracts were signed. So that's the precedent. This has been an issue that has been bounced back and forth at the state. The utilities have proposed some fees that are sort of outlandish and the Public Service Commission is, uh, so there's been a little bit of back and forth. So there's no yet testing of, of what the fees, of the going rate will be, so to speak, for the next program. We only have the latest program to, to.
Do you have no idea what central Hudson may charge?
Well, it, we have an idea based on their proposals, but their proposals have to be accepted as well. It's essentially, it essentially becomes a tariff, a utility tariff, like anything else they charge. So it has to be, it has to be approved by the Public Service Commission, which it has not. The, um.
What's the ne, the date for the next tariff, is that in February?
They just postponed, they, they just went through another postponement round around this issue. It's been actually a few of these sequential postponements. Um, I don't know the next time, it, it's sort of the next expiration date. But the, part of the complication there, and I don't wanna get too far in the weeds in this, is that there's a parallel proceeding at the state level to make this sort of data publicly available for free. So the Public Service Commission is a little bit sort of playing the fence to, you know, I think, that's my interpretation. You know, with the hope that they might be able to get out of having to rule on this at all. And, you know, and the data becomes free for everybody. That's, remains to be seen, but so far the utilities seem to be cooperating with that.
Do you have a person that you deal with at NYSARDA?
Yes.
And who does that thing?
Um, well, the, the head of the Communities Division is, is named Brad Tito.
Brad?
Tito, T.I.T.O.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Located in Albany?
He's in New York.
In New York City or?
Yeah, New York City. They have an office, um, in, in New York City. You also could, could contact Kelly Tyler.
K.Y.L.E.R.?
Yes, but Brad Tito is much closer to this particular issue.
Okay. Is Kelly located, where's he or she?
Kelly's a she, I think Kelly might actually be in Albany, I'm not sure about that. I know Brad is in New York.
So on the records, uh, the, the records, the way I'm reading this is, see, uh, so this enables you to, uh, to pay distribute, the distributing utility, which would be, say, at central Hudson, I guess, uh, the point zero seven cents for records? Is that right?
That's, that, right, so that's what, that's what was paid in Westchester.
But then the next is provided that Juul may seek reimbursement from the competitive supplier. So how does that work? So that wouldn't come through us, it would be whoever we chose as the new supplier?
Yeah, so the supplier is likely to pay the bulk of the fees, the, um, especially for the customer-specific data. But they may pay, they may agree to pay all of the fees.
Okay, and what if they don't may and we, and then who pays? Because it says may.
Well, it'll have already been paid for, in other words, it'll be a right sort of retroactive reimbursement for, if the municipality wouldn't pay in any case. But this is, this is providing for reimbursement after the fact of, of money that was laid out upfront by us.
So Juul, you pay central Hudson?
And we reserve the right to negotiate with them whether we can get them to pay our reimbursement.
So if the municipality doesn't pay and there are fees, it's gonna come out of the cost that the customer is paying for the electricity?
No, no, it's just fees, it's, 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 um.
Somewhere along the line, somebody's gonna get reimbursed for this.
The, the, these fees are essentially, you're paying the utility, the Juul, the CCA administrator is paying the utility for access to this data. Um, and that is a one-time fee for access for, to their system, to their proprietary data that they're mandated to give us, but they have also been provided for, the state has provided for them to recoup a fee for that. So there's a, a debate about what the market value of that data is considering there is no market for it. There is one precedent and, but that fee is a one-time upfront fee based on the number of customers. And it may or may not be reimbursed by the winning supplier later, but it wouldn't, it wouldn't, it wouldn't fall to the municipality or to the customers either way, it will either be us or them.
Is my math bad on this? We've got about, so it's seven cents per customer. And we've got about eight hundred to nine hundred residential and commercial custom, customers in the village of Cold Spring. So we're talking seventy dollars? I mean, we're not talking.
Yeah, if it's seven cent, right, exactly, yeah.
Yeah, okay, so it's not huge amounts of money?
No, it's not huge amounts of money for the village. It, of course, so in Westchester, it was more like a hundred thousand.
Oh, God, yes, yes, yes.
And it was like in the tens of thousands and it was a nonprofit that was paying for it, so it was, it was a big deal. For the, for the village, for a small village, it's, it's, yeah, it's, it's not much.
Right. And then five three, they talk about municipalities shall pay Juul all of the fees for municipal energy services. What other fees may come up?
There aren't any other fees, it's the fee for the data that goes out from the program, so to speak, to the utility. And then the administrative fees are collected from the supplier, so that the, the energy services company that's supplying the energy to the administrator.
So are we responsible to pay Juul for those?
No.
So then why is this?
That's the que, I think he's asking the question.
No, I mean, I'm looking at the, at the five point three, this is municipalities shall pay Juul all of the fees for municipal energy services as may be agreed in writing by the parties. So there are no other fees?
No, not, no, no, there are no other fees associated with the CCA administration. This is a reference actually to a previous section. If there are additional agreement, in other words, this, this provides for Juul to serve in other capacities for the municipality in terms of energy consulting, all right, and providing energy services. So in the event that we agree upon some fee for that future work, then the municipality agrees to pay fees that are agreed upon already at that date. But the CCA administration has no cost. But the CCA administration has no cost to the, no, no fees or any cost from the municipality out to anyone.
That's what we like to hear.
Yeah, I know.
So can we kind of clarify that, or can we change that just to clarify a little, by, by the parties? The parties is, I don't know if there's a definition for parties, but that kind of is a little ambiguous to me.
Sure.
Also, if there aren't any, then, I don't know. I would ask you if we could clear that.
I, I don't have, I, I'll talk to our lawyer. I don't think, I don't have any problem with that being taken out because I think it's sort of redundant considering that, that would, anything like that would be covered by some future document. You know, but I don't have any problem with taking it out completely. I certainly don't have a problem to changing it to the parties.
I guess if, I mean, if you could, can you get those changes to a spot, you know, at time to review? And then we can put this on the agenda next.
Yeah, I'll talk to him tomorrow.
For next Tuesday, okay. If we can get that and get a revised, you know, contract.
Yeah, so are there other revisions other than?
I think those are the ones, I think you didn't go over too quickly. I don't know if anyone has any. Marie, do you want to contact NYSARDA?
I'll get in touch with NYSARDA.
Okay.
According to Dr. John's email.
Sure.
If there's a going to act of law establishing the CCA, is that what you've experienced in the past?
You have to, you've done that.
Okay, we did go through. So now John is saying that that would require a public hearing, the local law would require, do they have a public hearing?
You did.
You did. My golly.
I know, I know, it's been a long time.
How long? It's been six months, has it not?
Uh, yeah, probably.
And I think we have also reviewed this six months.
It's a change though.
So, so yeah, I'd love to move it ahead if we get that and.
I think this is pretty straightforward.
If you have a phone number for Brad, could you send it to me?
Yeah.
Or an email address?
Sure, sure. I'll do that now so I don't forget.
Thank you.
Mike, do you have one? I see you digging.
For Brad?
He has a number. A lot of people. Brad's a popular guy.
Wears a lot of hats, Brad.
So you're going to get four emails today with Brad. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Sorry, got my agenda waiting. A couple of quick things while we're looking for numbers. The tree lighting, the committee puts that on is this Saturday at six o'clock.
This Saturday?
Seriously?
That's what, that's what Bruce told Jeff. And I believe they're working with the chamber, wanted to be involved, so it might be a street wide event. But I haven't checked Chamber website.
Have you heard anything yet?
I, I have. You, you guys, Bruce Campbell and Jeff wanted an ad in the paper for tomorrow. And I have a little box on the front page that says six P M. Saturday.
Wonderful.
So I hope it's six P M. Saturday.
Thank God you're here.
The other thing is that the bathrooms are once against trash at the foot of Main Street. I was just walking around on Saturday and Friday, that's right, I got lost on the holiday week. So it was Friday, walked in and seats were torn off. Water was just running nonstop and one in, water leaking out of the pipes. I don't know if that was due to vandalism or why they were running. The other one was just trashed and full of toilet paper and, and no seat, the seats like ripped off. So we're shutting them down. I'm seeing if we can winterize them and close them down unfortunately for the winter. Right now we heat them for the whole winter, so I'm not sure how much use they get in the winter either. But, and then we have to bring this up and work something out with merchants and, and, you know, like working on it together and come up with a plan for the bathrooms because we can't keep fording plumbing repairs every other week, which is happening. We put supplies in there and they get stolen and taken by hikers, I assume. I don't know who else takes toilet paper, but, so I guess maybe. I don't know whether the vandalism is at night. I have to talk Larry Burke, our officer in charge. Police are supposed to lock it and open it up. I'm not sure if that's being done. Or maybe sometimes it's lax and they leave them open a little too late at night. I'm not sure. But it could be, it could be locals at night, I don't know, or weekends. I, I have no idea. But, and maybe cameras are a way to go too. So, but we need to figure something out there because I'm not going to keep putting money into those bathrooms. They're a mess right now. They definitely need work, but it seems like everything we do just, you know, gets trashed. So as of Friday, we turned the water off because we couldn't stop the toilets from running and we're just wasting all this water. So to Michelle's part, well, it's a little different. More waste of water, which is precious. So anyway, that's where that's at. Anybody else have anything?
Do you have the CUC meetings for Murray?
Oh, that's right.
I was going to wait until you.
I'm sorry. I didn't want to forget because I haven't.
Did I, I forgot something. I'm sorry. Jumped the gun. I lost my agenda.
Discussion on USDA letter. Chestnut Ridge.
Yeah, hold on one second. Digging. Okay, we received a letter from, well, we didn't receive a letter. Tenants from Chestnut Ridge received a letter from United States Department of Agriculture. Was there a, a letter after this one that someone stated that?
Supposedly Doug.
Doug's headlines last week said that there, please.
There, as I, not as I've, I've seen both letters. The first letter said that the owner was seeking permission to pay off his loan to the USDA early and that if he did that, the units could become market rate units at whatever the market rates were. The second letter said that the owner was seeking to pay off his loan early, but that he had told the USDA and intended to continue to operate them as affordable housing. The owner told me by phone, which I wrote about last week, that essentially the USDA thing was a refinancing of the original mortgage. He still planned to participate in Section Eight housing. He still planned to manage the program. Every apartment there is in Section Eight and receives a subsidy based on a percentage of income minus expenses. So the residents were very agitated however, and having received two letters, some of them, they wondered what in blazes was going on.
I don't know, did all of them receive a second letter? Because I asked her.
I, I, I didn't do an exhaustive canvas. I know that some received two letters. But I don't know how many did and whether some received the first but not the second or the second but not the first.
So is, is it your understanding that the owner is planning to refinance as opposed to pay off the mortgage and?
Yeah, he, he intends to refinance. The effect would be that he pays off the one and gets a, gets a new, gets a new loan.
From the USDA?
I'm not certain where the new loan comes from, but the first loan is held by the USDA.
Right.
But.
So can we ask, can we ask Jeff to call up USDA? Can you put that, are you going to talk to Jeff in the morning? Ask Jeff to contact them and get to the bottom. We're, we're going by second information and, and one letter that's not even to us. I mean, we haven't even been notified. And the, and the residents are, you know, understandably upset thinking they're going to get thrown out of.
Oh, they're, many of them are very upset.
Right, so we can do that. Get to the bottom of it.
Okay.
Thanks. Okay, next is authorize mayor to sign change order number two for Market Street Pump Station.
Changing date.
What's that?
It's a changing date.
Okay, do you know?
Yeah.
You want to?
Um, because of delays that the contractor had experienced and the fact that the, the asphalt plants are shutting down. The contractor has asked for an extension of the completion date so that the work is not going to be done in the wintertime with the, the street being opened up and blah, 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 blah. So that's why change order number two. It's a changing date.
Great, okay.
So I, I make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign change order two for Market Street Pump Station, which is changed to the substantial completion date. New date would be April twenty-seventh, two thousand eighteen, with a ready for final payment date of May thirtieth, two thousand eighteen.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next, the request for menorah lighting, December seventeenth at one P M. I talked to Jeff about this. This is third year that I've, I've had the, the letter from the rabbi. They have it at the foot of Main Street. And they just asked if we can use the electric from the, from the visitor's center, which we hooked up. Talked to, talked to Charlie about that. Jeff has said he'd follow up on getting any kind of insurance, whatever else we need for that. So I'll move to approve the request for the menorah lighting ceremony, December seventeenth, one P M.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor? You're on Lynn.
Oh. Oh, look at that. Okay. I move to approve batch number four three eight eight for the total of twenty-one thousand, two hundred and twenty-six dollars and seventy-one cents.
Have a second discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
Now, anything else on the board? Just jump to the bottom.
Two items. Michelle mentioned it's coming up on budget discussion season. So I'd like to ask Michelle to get, start to kick that off because we really got a late start on it last year. End of year is probably an appropriate time for people to start thinking about it. So unless anybody has an objection, I'll talk to Michelle about that tomorrow and ask her to send that out in December with responses back by mid-January. Does that sound reasonable? Six weeks?
I would ask Michelle what she thinks is reasonable and what information she has to have or makes it easier for the department.
What is best for her?
Or when she has enough information, actually move forward, whatever. So yes, I'm fine with that.
Okay. And the second is the code update committee is having a public meeting number two tomorrow night at seven o'clock at the firehouse. The purpose of the meeting is to obtain feedback on the nine topics in the appearance category. And they involve area bulk, lot coverage setbacks, three-story buildings, fences, cultural artifacts, signs. I'm sure I'm leaving something out. A, a variety of topics, all of which have been reported here at every monthly meeting. The format of the meeting will be a, a background on the code update committee and then broad highlights for each of the nine topics and then an open discussion with questions. The meeting will not be closed for another month so that we can receive follow-up questions. Participants, attendees will be provided with hard copy text of the proposed changes to the village code, which are current village code, proposed village code with sections that are affected, which are section one oh four, one thirty-four dash two, one thirty-four dash three, one thirty-four dash seven through one thirty-four dash eighteen, Appendix E and Appendix F.
What time is it tomorrow night?
Six, seven o'clock tomorrow night.
Okay, now the difference, this is a meeting, not a public hearing, but is there are also going to be a public hearing at some point.
Yes, the process that has to be followed, which is prescribed by NYSARDA, is that there must be a public hearing. The public hearing can only be conducted by the village board. Because so many of the topics overlap in the code, our approach was to complete all the twenty-nine topics and then go through a legal review and then present the results to the village board. And then it is up to the village board to schedule the public hearing. The comments that we receive at the public meeting will be listened to by the, the code update committee. And whatever they think is appropriate will be incorporated into the recommendations that go forward.
And then at the public hearing, that also can be changed from input from the public?
Oh, yes, yes, that's the whole purpose of, of a public hearing.
So it's basically, well, I just, so the public meeting, you will be taking input and changing or not. And then that will be coming to us for our review, but at the same time, another public hearing will be held.
The only public hearing?
Right.
Will be held, yes. Now, it is possible, and certainly within the purview of the village board, to decide to have a public hearing on certain sections of the village code and not wait until all twenty-nine topics are reviewed. The likelihood that a subsequent topic such as floodplains or steep slopes may affect a topic that has already been addressed for lot coverage, setbacks, area and bulk could further impact that, that section of the village code is probably pretty high. But there's no reason why a public, two public hearings can't be held on a specific chapter of the village code, such as one thirty-four dash seven, which is R one, single-family residences. You could have a public hearing on area bulk, lot coverage and setbacks, use, which was covered in pub, public meeting number one. And then subsequently have, and, and get that, those changes adopted or changed into the code. And then subsequently go back and modify one thirty-four dash seven because of implication of steep slopes in the R one districts.
Okay. Anything else? Anything from the public? Yes.
What are the next steps of the timeline on the CCA agreement?
Well, we're going to, Marie's going to check with NYSARDA, check some of the numbers that they have or recommendations. They are going to get back to us with revisions requested by our attorney, which they said you can turn over quickly. And then hopefully next Tuesday, we would vote to go with Juul.
What do you?
A con, a contract with Juul. And then from there, Juul would, I guess, would probably have conferences with us or meetings with us to decide how we want to work the, the.
Types of electricity? Types of electricity?
That's a ways off. They have to, they have to get everybody's information, the way I understand it. And then they know what they have to work with based off the customer accounts. And they can see how much leverage they can use, I guess.
And they have to have public meetings, don't they?
There is another public meeting. I'm not sure when it was over. I can't remember right now, but I think there is one more that has happened.
But at some point we decide whether we want to go with like all green.
Yeah, definitely.
But that's after they get the information.
Yeah.
From the records.
But that's, that's not just us, isn't that the whole group that are playing together?
Yeah.
Got your fish kill and, and.
The town is ahead of us and.
Well, I mean, it could be, I mean, they could offer a couple of different options. All green, all green with.
Or, or cheaper.
Price, price only, yeah?
Price only, right, so.
Well, they've been gathering a lot of this information because we took longer to pass it or to hire them. They've got you guys.
Yeah, we're in the same situation. We haven't heard back from quite so long.
All right, so I think they have to, they said the whole process was over a year.
I think the deadline's coming where we have to, where all the groups have to be in for this.
To hire Juul.
Yeah.
If we want to, which we're doing.
Right, so it seems like they have to wait till they have the total, all the, the group together or the number of municipalities. Oh, sorry.
Hi, I, I don't believe that every municipality has to have, it doesn't have to be a uniform choice. It wasn't in Westchester, so some communities chose one mix while other, you know, you had green communities, you had, I think Somers chose to. So some communities chose one mix while, you know, you had green communities, you had, I think Somers chose to go just the, whatever was the lowest price. They, they weren't going green. So just, just FYI.
Okay. Anything else?
Motion to adjourn?
Second that, all in favor?
Aye.